The Dickinson City Commission meeting of January 19th. The roll should show that we have three commissioners present tonight. First order of business is the order of business. Mr. Kessel, do we have any changes to our agenda?
Yes, we do, President Jackson. I'd like to request that we add the gap analysis that was presented to us by the North Dakota Association of Oil and Gas Producing Counties a couple of meetings ago. And then, due to the paucity of commissioners present today, we should take the KLJ task order and postpone that until the next city commission meeting.
Okay, where do you want to put the association?
That would be something we'll have to vote on, so that should probably be become for E and move reports to for F.
Any other changes to the agenda from anybody? Not will look for motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that will move to the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that you'd like to discuss individually?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A second.
We have motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote Mr. Oatmans, Mr. Decker, and Chair votes aye. With that, we'll move to our regular agenda, item 4A, the Branson Agreement. We discussed this, I think, at the last meeting. Ms. Goss, you're going to explain that to us again?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, Commissioner. You're right, we did discuss this at the last meeting. This is a release and agreement. Essentially, the city purchased two utility easements in 2012 for services, for bringing services to Sundance Cove from Mr. Branson. Part of those agreements called for reclamation of the land, which was not completed by the developer. We also did not receive original easements to record. So, under this release and agreement, the city will pay damages in return for a release and newly executed easement, and the intention is to then seek reimbursement from the developer. Staff recommends approval.
Have those discussions with the developer begun?
President Jackson, I've had several discussions with the developer. They are well aware of what's happening.
Any other questions for either Ms. Goss or Mr. Kessel? If not, we'll look for motion.
I've moved to approve settlement agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Not, we will vote. Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. We have a tobacco license, Ms. Goss.
Yes, thank you. This is a tobacco license for vapes. With the revision to the tobacco ordinance, it now requires vape shops to have a tobacco license, so this, the vapes is complying with that. They have submitted an application, paid the fees, and met all of the requirements. Staff would recommend approval.
Okay.
With their application, then, will we have everyone in compliance, or there's still some shots out there that?
No, this is the last one.
Last one. Okay. I would make a motion to approve, then.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Not, we'll vote. Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ms. Goss, you have an ordinance to propose to us.
Yes, a month or two ago, we brought this actually as a report to the commission. We are looking at creating a permitting process for the commercial use of sidewalks. It would allow outdoor patios, mobile vendors, sale of merchandise, and pedestrian signs on the public areas. In the permitting process, it would require site plans to ensure that there was clear space for pedestrians, insurance in order to cover damage to city property, persons, and other property in the area. Would require proper cleanup and other things of that nature. At the commission's request, we did take this to the Dickinson Downtown Association, and they have let us know that they are in agreement with the ordinance as written. We would recommend approval.
Any questions, Ms. Goss?
I have one question. If a mobile vendor, say a sandwich truck or something, would set up, is that a different permitting process, or does that fall under the sidewalk, since we're permitting the sidewalk?
That's what this would fall under, is because it's not necessarily sidewalk, it's street and sidewalk, so that there's actually a section that is for, is specific to mobile vendors.
So, they live at five, they, each person down there will have to be permitted?
That's correct.
Mr. Kessel, you and I talked about a couple of possible minor changes.
I did receive a copy of that, and as far, I believe you had three comments. One was as far as damage to city property. There is a specific provision in here for insurance that would cover any of that type of damage, so that's currently in there. Another one was trash and cleanup of the area. That is specifically in this ordinance as well. The only thing that was not was, it was, I believe, grease down the drains, was your other comment. That is not in here, from what I could tell, but that is definitely something that can be added.
Okay. So, we'll have time for minor things like that, the first, between the first and second reading?
Absolutely.
To do that. Any other questions or comments from Ms. Goss? This is a, this is an ordinance, the first reading of an ordinance, so we want to get input from the public, so we will open, open up for comments from the public right now on this ordinance. What will the number be, Ms. Goss?
1605.
If there's any, anybody from the public that would like to offer comments or has questions about the proposed ordinance, 1605, please come forward to the podium. I see no comments, so we will close the public hearing portion of this and ask for comments or a motion from commissioners.
I'd make a motion to approve first reading of ordinance number 1605.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this proposed ordinance? Not, we'll vote. Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
And Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Okay, City Administrator Kessel, City Land Sale?
Thank you, President Jackson. We were, I was approached by Scott Olene from Dickinson Ready Mix to purchase a small portion, a small parcel of land that we acquired several years ago as part of a collection of purchases from the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad. This was done approximately 10 years ago. The piece in question is one of those pieces that we purchased. They, throughout the process of aligning the overpass at State Avenue, they lost some property, and they want to try to regain some of that back. This happens to abut their property on the east side of State Avenue, in that general vicinity. It does track back several hundred feet to the east of there. Upon receiving his request to purchase the land, we did contact all the adjacent property owners and gave them the opportunity to bid on this property. We also advertised it, to make sure that anybody who was interested could bid. We received no bids, other than the one from Dickinson Ready Mix. I did have a couple of conversations with adjacent landowners about the property specifically, and they were, their questions were satisfactorily answered, either by Mr. Olene or myself. So, what you have before you, then, is the proposed purchase of just over two acres of land for the price of $35,360. The parcel description and a map of that land is included. And just for reference purposes, we just purchased land for $12,000 at the corner of 21st and 30th. So, I think this is a more than fair price for these two acres. And that concludes my presentation, unless there's questions from the commission.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Kessel? So, we would just need a motion to approve the sale of this city parcel?
Correct.
To Dickinson Ready Mix for this moment.
Okay.
So moved.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
And a second. Any, any further discussion? Not, we'll vote. Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Mr. Kessel, then, we'll have, we have the added item, the Association of Counties' proposal.
Thank you, President Jackson. You heard from AE2S staff about two meetings ago about a gap analysis that the North Dakota Association of Oil and Gas Producing Counties would like to conduct, specifically for western North Dakota. The gap analysis would take a look at the amount of expenses that have been incurred, whether that through the creation of infrastructure, the maintenance of infrastructure, the addition of operational issues, adding staff members, or having to pay additional salaries to staff members to retain those, acquiring housing. There's a whole litany of extra expenses that we experienced in western North Dakota. And then, it would compare, then, the revenue sources that we've also received, specifically those received from the state. But it was also considered revenue sources that we are in control of, such as property tax, sales tax, hospitality tax, all of those things. The result would be a gap analysis. The expectation is that gap will be a expense over revenue gap. I think that would be fair to say that we've had that gap in Dickinson. Without using state funds, we would never have got the amount of infrastructure we have today, including DOT funds, not things allocated specifically to us. The Association of Oil and Gas Producing Counties is putting in money to offset the cost of this account, or of this project, but they think that up to $30,000 might be our share, depending upon participation of other cities within the western North Dakota. So, the issue that's before you, then, is do we want to participate in this gap analysis, and if so, how we should pay for that thirty, up to $30,000 bill? My suggestion would be we use sales tax funds, the 20% of the 1%. 20% of the 1% is specifically dedicated for economic development. We have a contract that is our major expense in that category with Stark Development, but it by no means drains the fund completely. So, to me, that seems like an appropriate revenue stream, and it would be my recommendation that we move forward with this contract. I'll conclude my remarks and try to answer any questions.
What kind of time horizon are they looking at, do you feel?
The, they have several cities that they have to approach. Williston, Latford City were the other two major cities, and then they have two other smaller cities that they'll also be approaching. Depending upon when those cities give the okay, they'll start. And at the conclusion, I did, obviously, we want it well before the session starts, so my expectation is that we would get that within the next six months.
Okay.
I can clarify a better date for you, though, Commissioner Oatmans.
And the number Mrs. Steiner talked to us about was 30,000?
That was the number that they proposed for the local share. And I would make sure that we put in our bid, or our motion, if you're interested, that it be up to 30, so that it could include a number less than that.
Yeah, I was remembering a different number, but I trust you. And we're comfortable using the 20%?
I think that's the logical place, that that account has a healthy balance in it.
We certainly could use oil revenue money as well. It's a, it's a small amount, and, but as we go through the reforecasting, the largest hit so far to our revenue has been in, in the oil revenue that we expect to see. Hence, my recommendation for economic development.
Okay, well, I think the exercise is a good exercise. I hope it's timely for the legislature. I assume that's the intent.
That's exactly the intent, President Jackson.
Any other questions or comments? Well, let's have a motion.
I would make a motion to approve the gap analysis with a payment of two $30,000.
I'll second that.
We have motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not, we'll vote. Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. And then, you have some reports, Mr. Kessel.
Thank you, President Jackson. I do, the first one is a continuing disclosure form. We are not used to having bonded indebtedness here in Dickinson. Over the last 15 years or so, the project that has incurred the most debt from a bond standpoint has been the community center, the construction, and then now the addition that was created. I just wanted to share this document with you. It is something that'll be done on an annual basis. It does include a great deal of information that I thought would be helpful for the, for the city commission, especially on the heels of today's State of the City address, where, President Jackson, you did a wonderful job of encapsulating our current status. So, it's more for your review and information than it is for anything else. We do get a charge that is, was part of the payables. I just wanted to make sure you saw that and understood that all of the pledging that we have made of revenue streams are regularly reviewed by the bond council, so.
I thought there was some nice summary information in those two reports.
There really was, and I'm glad that it seems timely. The next item that I have, then, is a request by the North Dakota Housing and Finance Agency. They are conducting a statewide housing needs assessment. The last one that was, was completed was several years ago, and so they're engaging an effort to do this again. They're expecting that that cost will be $170,000. They've already signed the contract with Dr. Nancy Hodor and Dean Bangsroot of the Agribusiness and Applied Economics Division of NDSU. If you remember, that is the exact people who conducted our population analysis several years ago, as part of our comprehensive planning process. I did talk to Mrs. Klein, she is the director of that agency, just to find out a little bit more about what her expectations were. They budgeted $125,000 of the 170, so they are hoping to raise the remaining funds through community participation. I asked her if she had any expectations for Dickinson itself, she does not. They received commitments, the last time they did this, in 2012, from Bismarck, Fargo, Williston, and Grand Forks, and those commitments ranged anywhere from $500 to $10,000. So, quite a, quite a range. The, the type of information that they expect to receive from this document is, includes two things. The first is kind of an overview of statewide trends in housing. So, look at some demographic shifts, some population shifts, changes in the state's economy, things of that nature. The second thing will be to forecast housing supply and demands by region. They specifically call out Dickinson as one of the areas that will be studied. So, I'm not sure how specific the resulting data will be, but they'll definitely be studying our region and our community. You've been provided kind of a contract for, for services, so this is not an item that we expect you to make a decision on tonight, but wanted to make you aware that they are hoping that the city of Dickinson will participate financially in this needs assessment. I've not had an opportunity to talk to Galen Baker from Stark Development, but that is one conversation I would like to have before I make a final recommendation to you as a city commissioner.
I believe that Stark Development participated in the cost of this study in the past. Is that true?
That's what I remember as well.
I know that they've conducted a housing assessment. I just didn't know if that was through North Dakota, or if we did our own.
And, well, I think it was.
Okay.
Through the, I think it was through the Housing Finance Agency. But maybe between now and when we do consider this, maybe you can check that with Mr. Baker.
I will, I will have that conversation and, and bring a recommendation.
Okay.
The last item then, that I have, then, is just a, a report on our upcoming city elections. You know, I'm not sure how much people are aware of what it takes to become interested, to, to run for a city office. We'll have three positions that will be open or, or available for election. And so, I wanted to just kind of run through a little bit of the qualifications, if you'll indulge me. First thing that people need to know is, is there's a certain amount of signatures that are required to, to get your name on the ballot. You have to have a minimum of 300 signatures in order to get your name on the ballot. But before you do that, you have to be qualified. And it's, it's fairly easy to be qualified. You have to be a citizen of the United States. You have to be 18 years of age or older, and a resident of the precinct for at least 30 days. Our precinct is the city of Dickinson as a whole, so we don't, we don't have a requirement beyond that. Your mailing address, your house number and street, have to have, of course, Dickinson in that address. You have to reside within the city limits of the city of Dickinson. As I mentioned, it's 300 signatures that are the minimum requirement. The filing deadline is April 11th, Monday, April 11th, at 4:00 PM. So, once you've distributed your petitions, they have to be returned to my office by that time. And then, we'll do the ballot order draw at 4:15 that same day. So, what that means is we pull names out of a hat, essentially, and that's how they'll get listed on the actual ballot itself. So, I just wanted to make sure that if there's people listening or present who are interested in running for office, you can start filling those, that information out and circulating petitions.
What you read off was the voter qualification, right? To be a voter?
Right, what I, what I, yes, and.
To be a voter, be 18 and, be a precinct for 30 days. Now, the qualifications to become an elected officer are a little bit different.
They have to be a resident of nine months.
Nine months.
That's really the only other.
Right.
Yeah, yep, that's the, the only difference.
And, Mr. Kessel, somebody who wishes to carry a petition would get those petitions where?
They can come to the city hall here. Ms. Binstock can distribute those. We can certainly have some available at the front desk. But that's, I suggest, they come to city hall during regular business office hours. We'll help them out.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
That concludes my reports for this evening. Thank you.
With that, we will move to engineering. Mr. Kubis, you have a couple of items for us.
Yes, thank you, President Jackson, Commissioners. The first item before you is an engineering services agreement with Highlands Engineering and Surveying for the survey design and construction inspection of water sewer, drainage, and street improvements. The project area is in north Dickinson. Specifically, it's north of 40th Street, east of Highway 22. The, the project would be constructed mainly in existing city right-of-way, but it's anticipated that the city would need some permanent sewer easements and at least one location. The project is currently in our 2016 CIP list. We refer to it as the North Annexation Utilities. Revenue reforecasting may require that this project be moved out, however. It is a priority project nonetheless, as it would provide essential services to this area in north Dickinson. It's important to mention that the project is budgeted to be bid as a standalone project that would be funded in part or in whole through a special improvement district. Should also be noted that the water for this project would generally come from an area west of Highway 22. That being said, the, the State Avenue Booster Pump Station project and the 40th Street Water Main project, both of which are in design right now, would need to be constructed to serve the area with adequate water flow and pressure. City staff has reviewed the scope and fee and recommend approval. With that, I'd open it up for any questions you might have.
The only thing that I would say, we want to do this project, and it'll be a good improvement for that area. But the only thing I would say is that depending on how much of it is special assessments and how much is not, we may not want to kick off this work until we're sure we have our house in order financially. The work that you guys are doing right now, to know where we stand with oil impact money, with the rest of our capital projects. It, now, if it's going to be 100% special assessment, then, no problem. And I would expect, I would hope, that we'd be meeting with the property owners up there before we kick this off. But those are some details you guys will have to work out.
Yes, and as, as you see in the packet, Exhibit C, the last page in the agreement, is a notice to proceed, so this would approve the contract, but, but no work would be paid for anyway, before that notice to proceed would be issued by the cities.
Okay. As far as the agreement itself, it looked fine to me. Anybody else has got questions or comments? Okay, so, we need a motion for disposition of the Highlands agreement.
Make the motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? If not, we will vote. Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Chair votes ayes, the motion carries. Go ahead, Mr. Kubis.
The next item is a, is a report, and it really goes in parallel with the, the gap analysis report that you'd heard earlier from Administrator Kessel. And this is a urban transportation needs assessment. A little history on, on this needs assessment is that the North Dakota DOT was approached by the legislature, encouraging them to have the, the major urban centers, which is defined as cities over 5,000 population, to determine their, their needs of their urban roads. And to equalize those needs, instead of having each city determine those needs individually, it was suggested that the Upper Great Plains Transportation Institute perform that needs assessment, be based on four things: pavement condition, traffic volumes, bridges, and future growth. The study would only cover our collector roads and our arterial streets, so a, a local residential street wouldn't be included in this study. Similar to the gap analysis, there is some funding that would be put forth by the DOT, I believe, about $80,000 worth. And then, again, similar to that gap analysis, they're asking those major urban centers to contribute some amount prorated based on their amount, their mileage of, of streets. So, for Dickinson, that would be an estimate of $10,000 to $15,000. It's worth noting that this might not result in an immediate payback from 2017 biennium legislation. Of course, the, the funding will be a little bit tighter, but the study would collect some useful data that we don't currently have in the city, and that would be really our, our pavement conditions right now. That would be the bulk of, of what we're, we would be paying for. This would be very useful information as, as we go forth and budget and prioritize street projects in the city. We all have an idea of, of some of the streets that are in poor condition, but this would really put some engineering behind that prioritization. Also worth noting that cities like Dickinson or Williston that have added many, many miles of brand-new streets might not rank as favorably to cities with older pavements, just because the conditions of our streets, as a percentage of our overall network, would be fairly good. Right now, the League of Cities is kind of putting a, a cost-sharing agreement together, contacting all the other urban centers in north Dakota. And the meet, the last meeting we had, it was decided that the, the League of Cities or the DOT would be coming forward to the cities in the next month or two with some sort of a cost-sharing agreement to finalize these costs and to answer any other questions you might have. Again, on the timeline, the goal of this study would be to get it out in front of the legislature. They have a lot of field work to do, and they can't do that until really the spring thaw has happened. So, this study would be anticipated to be completed mid-October, was the, the best timeline they had right now. With that, I'd answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Kubis? You know, it certainly sounds like a worthwhile effort, but I do find myself wondering if the League of Cities is talking to the Association of Counties. Seems like there would be some overlap. Seems like there would be some overlap in these two efforts that we're talking about tonight.
There certainly could be, depending on what our needs would end up being on the surface transportation side, the gap would be dependent on those needs.
If nothing else, maybe we can promote some kind of a marriage here with at least the transportation portion of the effort.
Sure.
Okay, so we'll see this again probably in a month or so here or something?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. All right, anything else, Mr. Kubis?
Nope, that would be it. Thank you.
All right. With that, we are at 5:00, where we have a timetable agenda item for the improvement district for the lighting in North Dickinson. Ms. Goss, you're going to introduce that for us?
Yes, thank you. We had originally noticed a public hearing to determine the sufficiency of the protest for the Cook Lighting District. However, there was a publishing error, and the actual resolution did not get published correctly, so we had to republish and extend the deadline. So the new deadline to file written protest is February 7th, and the public hearing has been moved to February 15th. Along with republishing, we also sent out new letters to all of the property owners with the notification of the new date and time of the public hearing. In going through this process, we also found some minor errors that were contained in the original resolution, which was number 49-2015. So I am asking the commission to approve that resolution as amended, to fix those errors, which were a couple of flaws that were missing in the legal description. So, and that would be done via motion.
Okay, so this would be a new resolution number, I would guess?
No, we'd be keeping the resolution number. We would just be making a motion to amend it.
Okay, and what is that number, Ms. Goss?
It's 49-2015.
Okay. Now, this hearing date of the 15th, that's a regular City Commission meeting.
That's correct.
Is that the President's Day weekend, or is that the following weekend? In other words, will our meeting be on Monday or Tuesday?
Yeah, it'd be the 16th, sorry. It's February 16th.
Is that noted in here? What went out to the, about the meeting, to the people, it'd be in the 16th instead of the 15th?
I did not pull up the letter. I just wrote down the 15th. I believe that it went out on the 16th. Yeah, it did.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments concerning this amendment to 49-2015?
I would make a motion to make those amendments to 49-2015.
Yeah, a second. Motion and a second, any more discussion? So the deadline for receiving protests is February 7th?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, we will vote. Mr. Olman?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Okay, with that, we will move to Public Works. Mr. Zurov, you have a report for us tonight?
Yes, thank you, President Jackson and Commissioner. As you're aware of, we've had difficulty filling the position of the Water Reclamation Manager, but I'm pleased to announce January 11th, Mr. Greg Stack started as the new Water Reclamation Facility Manager, and he's here in the audience tonight, and I'd like to introduce him to the commission.
Come on up, Mr. Stack, and welcome to Dickinson. Do you want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Okay.
There it is.
I'm, my name is Greg Stack. I have, I came from a small town in South Dakota, Lennox, South Dakota, just south of Sioux Falls, where in my previous position, I was a public risk director down there. And I've been in this particular business with water reclamation, wastewater treatment for the past 34 years. So I've seen, I want to say that I've seen basically, you know, most facilities, large, small. This facility, very impressive that Dickinson is built, and I can tell you, I can tell you, I can tell my, tell you by my wife's reaction too as well, that we're both glad to be here and working for the City of Dickinson, and glad to be a resident.
Well, good, welcome. And you think that our facility seems to be working okay?
Facility seems to be working very well. It's a facility that you don't normally see this far north, but with the facility, the way it's set up, the way it was designed, I think it's a facility that will go ahead and I think blaze, let's call it blaze the trail for other facilities of the same sort in the future for Fort North Dakota. Just to, just to explain, if you would allow me to go ahead and explain, what that, what that means is that this facility essentially will go ahead and remove the nitrates in the water. So it, so it's, it has the potential for water that can be reused in perhaps irrigation. It will not exceed, it will not exceed basically what amounts to nitrate limits that you have in groundwater. Very similar to what we do or what we've done. I have experience down in the Arizona area, where they use water for recharge and then reuse, similar to what we do here. So you don't see that this far north. It's, I'll call it blazing the trail, if you will. So I was very intrigued with the facility when I came up here and I saw it, and so I guess that's why I'm here.
Well, good. Well, again, welcome.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, anything else, Mr. Zurov?
That's all, President Jackson.
Mr. Hadley, we have second reading of a zoning amendment.
We do, Mr. President. Zoning amendment's the second reading for Ordinance 1604. It's zoning text amendments that were considered initially by the Planning Commission at the end of 2014, and you heard the first reading of that at your last meeting. There haven't been any changes, and we're trying to consolidate and finish these recommended changes prior to starting a new round that we're going to talk about this year. With that, staff, would you recommend that we approve it?
Okay, no changes between first and second reading?
No, there have not.
Any questions for Mr. Hadley? Not, we look for, I'm sorry.
Hadley.
Yep. We need to see if there's anybody from the public who would like to comment on Ordinance 1604. Please step forward and make your comments for us. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve 1604.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? That will vote. Mr. Olman?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Any items that Commissioners would like to bring up?
I have one item, Mr. President. It, I just kind of wanted to bring up a project that I'm part of, Patterson Lake Task Force, and we're working on with different groups in Dickinson. The Park Board, Stark County Development, there's Stark County Commissioner on the task force, along with veterans groups, and what we're looking at is, is putting a facility out at Patterson Lake and improving the quality of recreation and usage out there. We looked at some different ways to possibly improve water quality, improve the fishery for recreation use, the beach area with the Park Board. They have some land out there, and we were first approached by veterans groups that were interested in building a building out there, a veterans lodge. Well, since it's Bureau land, what we're trying to do is get it, be it multifaceted, not so much just a veteran group, but a lakeside lodge that everybody can use. And it allows the veterans still have a place to meet, since we don't have a veterans club in Dickinson, but also allows for everybody in the city to use it. And right now, we're going through different things that are required by the Bureau, and one of that's Park Board, okay. And by Mr. Kramer's thoughts, that's not going to be a problem. And then developing a business plan, and then also doing some studies, feasibility studies, some ground archaeological stuff, which the BLM will assist with. And the president of that task force is, if it was something we consider, would be willing to come before the commission and present the project. And what basically the task force is looking for is possibly some money from the Economic Development Fund, that sales tax, about $20,000, to help with the studies. I think in a whole, they're going to, it'll probably range by the time they're done, around $40,000, $50,000 total in Stark County Development and in the Park Board and other organizations are going to all pitch in what they can. But we're looking to do something, it's, it's a way to another facet of improving the quality of Dickinson and draw people here and have something out there people use. We have a great lake out there. It's, it's getting better all the time. The fishing is getting better. During the summer, the recreation, it's packed, jet skiers and boaters, and if we can improve the beach, maybe do something with the water quality. We had a presentation by Solar Bee the other day, and they have some products that they can possibly put in the lake to help with the water quality. We don't know, we're still in discussion. So just something to think about and maybe entertain, and then we can have the president of that task force come in and do a little presentation. If it's something we consider.
Sounds good. Anything else from Commissioners? Anybody from the public that would like to bring anything of concern before the City Commission tonight? Anything at all? Seeing none, we will look for a motion for adjournment.
Still moved.
And we have a second?
Second.
We are adjourned.